Shabby. Or shabby, or the mind.
I'd like to call to order the Westmont Village Board meeting in November the eighth, two thousand and eighteen to order at six o'clock PM and ask Clerk Simtke for a roll call.
Mayor Gunther.
Here.
The clerks here, Trustee Addington.
Here.
Trustee Barker.
Here.
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Guzell.
Here.
Trustee Little.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Village Manager May.
Here.
Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Would everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone. This is an exciting meeting. We've got a lot of recognition to do, but I'd like Larry McIntyre will start with our birthday celebration. We had a committee meeting and I'll let him explain the new mural.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Village Board. As Mayor mentioned, this is our ninety-seventh anniversary for the Village of Westmont. The actual anniversary date is over the weekend, but we're celebrating today because we're all gathered here for the Village Board meeting. And we're on a five-year countdown to our hundredth anniversary. This is our ninety-seventh anniversary. And what we had decided to do was create a mural project in which a new historical mural would be unveiled every year leading up to the hundredth anniversary. And we are now in year three. And if we can get the mural up on the camera, just prior to this meeting, we unveiled this third installment. And this is a mural that covers the fifties, sixties, and seventies. And local artist Fanny Moye is the person who's been commissioned to do all of these murals. And you can see all the amazing detail that's in this mural. I'll mention just a few items, but it covers many things, but the old Stop and Chet Ice Cream Store. You have the Blue Village, which was a rock and roll club over on north side of town next to the railroad tracks. Muddy Waters, who lived in Westmont from seventy-three to eighty-three was his final home before he had passed. Bank of Westmont sign is in there because for years, that's where people got all their information of what was happening in town, as well as that was the financial institution that backed a lot of loans that built a lot of Westmont. You also have the Westmont High School, which came into being in nineteen seventy-six, and that took place on the old Healy property, which was north of Ogden Avenue. Just below that, there's an image, kind of gray, black and white. That's the Old Greg House Museum, which used to be on Cass Avenue, and that property was owned by Holy Trinity. It was sold to the Park District, it's my understanding, for one dollar. And they moved it from Cass Avenue to its current location, and the Greg House Museum has been in that location ever since. Below that, you see some train stations from the nineteen seventies. They were very futuristic in design, and they proved to be problematic because they were wind tunnels, and so they didn't last that long, that's my understanding. Below that, we have three business institutions that were in Westmont for many years, Wayback Hardware, Zolatar Cleaners, and Stevens Department Store. You also have a representation of three cars from the fifties, sixties, and seventies, and that also ties into the mini parades that were in town. Westmont was a community that's always had mini parades, and so just below that, you see a float of the Westmont Public Library. And there's, on the float, you see the words, "Teach your child to listen and to read a book." And that was actually from a photo. That was not something that Fanny had done on her own. That's an actual representation of a photo that's accurate from the time. So, a lot of detail, it's very exciting.
It's beautiful.
So, this will probably, it'll definitely eventually be hung at the Westmont Library. We'll get it to them here probably within the next month, and it'll be there before the first of the year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I move on to the rest of reports, I open form. Is anybody here who'd like to address the board on anything that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll close open form, move on to reports. First report is, I report, and I'd like to first call up our American Legion Commander Frank Trout. Got some big activities this weekend.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to invite all of our residents from Westmont along with the board for our American Legion welcome to the one-hundredth anniversary of the signing of the Armistice, also known as Veterans Day. And so this coming Sunday, at eleven o'clock at Tai Warner Park off of Chestnut Avenue, is our Veterans Memorial. And we're having our yearly service there at eleven o'clock on Sunday, the eleventh. So, I invite all Westmont residents along with the board for your participation and love to see you there. We also have on Saturday morning, on the tenth, the unveiling of our James Robinson, Sergeant James Robinson's memorial plaque in the lobby of the Village Hall. The mayor will be on hand along with other officials to dedicate that plaque. We have Jim Robinson's family will be there, along with friends. Jim Robinson's grandfather was a mayor of Westmont a few times, I believe at four or five, something like that. And along was a village trustee. Jim received the Medal of Honor, nation's highest award for his actions in Vietnam, and he was killed in the line of duty on April the eleventh, nineteen sixty-six. So, we welcome you all on Saturday morning. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Frank. Moving on, a quick sister city update. We have nine students and a teacher coming from Taiwan tomorrow night. And they'll be staying with us for two weeks, Larry, two weeks, and they'll be attending, living with families in the community, and then going to class at Westmont High School. So, we're kind of excited about that. We'll have a group go to Taiwan in March from Westmont. They'll do the same thing in Taiwan. Earlier, we had the Westmont is the Bestmont Contest Promotion. And are they still here, Larry, the ambassadors? All right, well, they created a nice little rap promoting Westmont. And since they're not here, I will move on to Clerk Simtke.
You don't want to sing it?
No.
I just want to remind everybody that holidays will be starting. The Holidays Frosty and Friends Parade is November twenty-fourth at five o'clock right down Cass Avenue, starting at the corner of Naperville Road and Cass. And then the tree lighting follows that, and there are free pictures with Santa and Mrs. Claus at the Westmont Center. So, be sure and take your children to the parade. And the Holidays Coats Drive started November first. There are two drop-off locations at the library and the Park District. So, if you have any coats that aren't just rags by this point, they can always use them. So, sort them out and take them down. The Westmont Holidays Winter Ball is coming up on Friday, November thirtieth at the Hilton. The reception is at six-thirty, dinner at seven. Live entertainment and auctions follow the dinner. Contact the Chamber of Commerce office or visit westmontchamber.com to RSVP if you're interested. It's a fun night. Everybody has a good time. So, come out and join us. We'll all be there. So, please come. That's all I have.
Well, thank you. I'm going to turn to Trustee Addington because he's got a lot of individuals he wants to introduce.
I think we have a couple anyway. Not coming? Okay. Anyhow, let's start with these, we'll start with these posters. And as the Lions Club does every year, we do a, we have what they call a peace poster contest. The poster is done locally to start off, and it's done at the junior high level. So, it's eleven, twelve, and thirteen-year-olds, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And there is a winner from each school here in Westmont. So, that's from Holy Trinity, from Westview Hills, and from Westmont Junior High. These three posters are the three winners from those three schools. And they will then move on to be judged the best poster from the Lions District, which covers fifty-eight clubs. Last year, there were eleven entries. We had three of them. And then if one of these three is chosen at the district level, then it goes on to the state level where there will be ten, and then it goes on to the international level. Ultimately, the winner of this contest, there's twenty-three five-hundred-dollar honorable mentions, and there was one winner of five thousand dollars, and that student goes to the United Nations on Lions Club Day at the United Nations and is introduced in front of the General Assembly. So, it's quite a contest. It's been going on for many years. The Westmont Club has done enough for the last four or five. And the students and the teachers who have supported this, and one of the teachers is here tonight, Josh Nance?
Vance.
Vance. Josh is the teacher at Westview Hills, and I will tell you, he brings out unbelievable talent in these young people. Again, keep in mind, these are junior high kids. And unfortunately, his student is Jemima Sorezo, and I think her parents work at night, is a problem. So, unfortunately, she can't be here. But this is her poster here, and what we want to do is can we put it on the, a little better. All right.
Have to move it around a little bit so you can see the detail.
Lot of detail. She is in seventh grade, so we get to see one more poster from her maybe next year. But unbelievable poster. The theme this year, they do a different theme every year, and the theme this year is kindness matters. And so, as you can see, a lot of good art detail. She talked about a lot of things that have gone on in this world over the years. But that's the winning poster from Westview Hills. And Josh, again, thank you very much. He also submitted a poster that I think we had the one with the compressed heart. Unfortunately, you're not supposed to have big letters on these posters. It's a poster. It's an art contest, not an essay contest. And she had put the theme in a banner across the top of the poster, kindness matters. But she, from a theme standpoint, she had taken two hands and compressed the world, the globe, into art. I thought it was just amazingly done, but the banner kind of killed it from going on further in the contest. But that's, that's the first one we're going to show. And then the second one, of course, is here, and everybody knows this young lady because she sang to you. But this is Abby Stromeyer. Did I say it right?
Stromeyer.
Stromeyer. Come up. And Abby, this is yours over there?
This one.
This one. Okay. So, if you would tell everybody a little bit about your idea on the poster and what your theme was.
So...
You know what? I'm going to put it right here and hope that the camera can pick it, pick it up from that camera right there. Take just a second.
Oh, there you go. Can we shift them a little bit? They can turn the camera a little bit. There he is. Okay, good.
All right, Abby.
Go ahead.
So, it's a peace poster contest, so I had a hand with the peace sign because I don't really like doing the peace sign with like the circle and the cross kind of design. I think it's more artistic to do a hand, and it's more human because kindness isn't a simple kindness. It's human, it's a human interaction. And kindness is global, so I put a globe, and I wrapped it around with chains because at Westmont Junior High, we focus a lot on Rachel Scott and her movement and how kindness is a chain reaction. So, I wrapped the world with chains, and the chains are kind of like in a rainbow sense because kindness can be expressed in many different ways or many different colors. And the chains, they go from one color to the next to show how one act of kindness leads to another. And at the top, I have a sun and pushing away the dark clouds because when you're kind, it gives everybody a brighter day. Yeah.
Very cool. Did somebody come with you tonight?
My mom is parked outside.
Oh, she parked outside. And our assistant principal, who's a big supporter of this program, Amy Quatron, you can step in and say hi. But Amy has always been a big supporter of this program, so again, we thank you and thank her. She did a great job. All right. And then, Holy Trinity, is Hannah here? No, she couldn't make it. Okay. So Hannah's is the other poster. That's the one behind this one. And again, her poster. Hannah is a, should we leave it up here where they should?
Yep.
And Hannah is, I believe, is in eighth grade also. And again, you can see the detail of the artwork and all the flags and the hands. And again, did a great job. Now, each of these three winners received from the Westmont Lions Club a fifty-dollar check, and their posters will now move on to the next level. If they win at that level, they win more money. So, as they move up the ladder, there's a chance for them to pick up some bucks plus to say thank you for just an unbelievable job that they did. These are unveiled Tuesday night at the Westmont Lions Club meeting, and they'll move on next Saturday to our district meeting. So, thank you all very much. Great jobs. She's the one who sang. She can sing again.
I know.
Okay. And then two other things, if I can, I just want to thank everyone who did come out and vote on Tuesday, although one of the elections, which was very close to us and to me, didn't work out the way we wanted it, but still, thank you very much to everyone who voted. I guess it was for an off-year election, it was one of the biggest turnouts in a long time. Yes.
Huge.
I think sixty percent here and about fifty-five percent across the county. So, again, we're glad. That's what we want from folks, is to get out and exercise your rights. So, that's done. And the last thing, of course, is as part of Holidays, Holidays officially kicks off a week from Sunday, which is the eighteenth of November. There's three things that day. There will be several groups who will be decorating the Christmas trees that are put up all along the perimeter of Veterans Memorial Park. And those trees will be decorated and lighted and will stay lit for the entire holiday season. And then they also have a craft show that day, a Christmas craft bazaar in the gym at the community center. And the Westmont Lions Club are the hosts for the traditional opening Holidays brunch, which is, we call it a brunch now because there's a lot of different things. It used to be just pancakes and sausage, and now we do eggs and omelets and biscuits and gravy and all kinds of other stuff. But that'll be from noon, I mean, from eight until noon on Sunday. So, everyone is welcome. I think adults are eight dollars, children are five dollars, under five is free, and seniors are five dollars. So, it's a lot of food for a couple of bucks, and that's all I have. Sir.
And that's at the senior center.
That's, that's at, yeah. Or the Ronald J. Gunther Administration Building, whoever you want to mention.
I like to say the senior center. I'm going to jump over to this side because I know we've got some additional recognition to do tonight. And Trustee Little, I'd call on you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to call Larry Forsberg to the front. We're going to hand out some awards.
Good evening, Mayor, Village Board members and those watching at home. I just want to say that the Westmont Chamber, along with the Westmont Historical Society, coordinated the Wicked Westfest Scarecrow Contest. We had twenty-two entries this year. We had a lot of great, really coolly designed scarecrows. So, without any further ado, we're going to go ahead and announce the winners. And actually, I should also mention that we had forty-six hundred votes this year, which is a record for this.
Awesome.
So, that represents, that's about almost twenty percent of the community. So, we will start off with the first one. Picture's worth a thousand words. So, let me call up, this is from the dance studio category. The winner's Dynamic Perception Dance Company. Jessica, you want to come? Group photo.
Larry, do you want Steve?
What's it?
Steve to take a picture?
We're good. Our next category is our business category, and the winner was First Midwest Bank. Wait till you get, wait till you see this. This is really cool. This is Violet. Mr. Wasney?
Very good.
Our next category is community nonprofit organizations, and the category winner was Saint Sophia's. Come on up.
Beware of the camp.
Oh, beware of the camp.
Our next decorated scarecrow, the winner was Carter School of Darian and Farmers Insurance. Ted, you want to come up, bring your family? And this one is kind of in keeping with our Environmental Improvement Commission and Richmond Gardens. We have a family category, and we have a scarecrow that was decorated as a beekeeper. Are we, have our group, here we go. Congratulations.
Well done. Very well done.
Well done.
Come on up with like one group, one large group picture if you don't mind.
A group picture. Oh, you lost one of the group.
So, Larry, most of the businesses were all self-explanatory, but what is the cat, the, is it Sophia's? Saint Sophia's.
What is that business, if you could educate us a little bit?
They're over on Chicago Avenue, Cat Rescue. You've got all types of cats there. And on a given day, how many cats will you typically have in residence?
We have about three hundred cats. Well, we have different homes a week.
Move them through. They're not all there at the same time. They shelter at different homes. So, if you're looking for a new pet, Saint Sophia's is a wonderful place to get that new pet.
Well, that's great. Thank you.
It's not the one, everybody. We also, one thing we'd like to do, we want to do a thumbs up. Thank you. Congratulations, everybody.
Congratulations.
So, the families and the businesses went through a lot of work to create these. And in essence, what we did is we kind of transitioned from those beautiful hanging flowers that we enjoyed all summer long into the fall into the scarecrows decorating, keeping with the Wicked Westfest theme throughout October. And now we're, you know, we just took down the scarecrows this last week, and we'll be transitioning into the beautiful Holidays decoration. So, I would just encourage everyone to continue to come downtown, shop, dine, and discover. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
In addition to that, I just wanted to let you know that the next Administration Finance Committee meeting will be December sixth at four-thirty in this room. Please come out and join us. The Holidays Home and Business Decorating Contest will sign up by December the seventh, and the registration is online. You can go online at westmont.ill.gov, and you can also go on to westmontevents.com. Either way, you can sign up to register and decorate. And please do this so that we can vote one more time and ensure that your business or home gets judged, get a prize. We have also, the Communications Department has been very busy. In the last month, we've had sixteen press releases, fourteen plus social media posts. The new Neighbors Magazine is out. The Zombie Pub Crawl was a success. We had over seventy-five participants. Great feedback from the businesses that were involved, as well as the people that dressed up and came out and joined us. So, it was a great time. And then last but not least, the State of the Village Address was held on October the twenty-sixth, and it ran smoothly, and it was greatly attended. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I do have to add to that, that the Wicked Westfest has grown, and it's all run by the Chamber and the Special Events Corp., which is volunteers.
Absolutely.
So, it's another one of our events that are run by our great volunteers. I'm going to jump back to this side, and I'm going to go with Trustee Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a couple of things to go over. The EDC meeting this week was at the new Napleton Westmont Porsche dealership. It was first presented to EDC in October of two thousand and sixteen with the remodel. The new dealership is wonderful. We encourage all to visit and see firsthand. And of course, the Napletons would love if you bought a vehicle while you were there. So, please, we encourage everyone to shop locally when it comes to automobiles. We have a lot of ribbon cuttings coming up. It's a busy time for business ribbon cuttings. We have eye-level learning for math and English. We have eye-level learning for math and English, and that's on Friday at 11:00 a.m. That is located at 216 East Chicago Avenue, and we recently had a ribbon cutting for Vibrant Credit Union at Lincoln and Quincy, and DeFeeny Counseling and Consulting at 200 East Chicago Avenue. So, we see we've got a lot of activity on Chicago Avenue, it's not just the cats that are getting rescued over there. So, please give a warm Westmont welcome to these three businesses, and if you need any more information on any of these, please contact the Chamber for additional details. An exciting thing, I know for everyone on the board, and I think everyone for the village, is there's a demolition ceremony coming up. Now, this is not a demolition derby like Santa Fe Speedway used to hold. This is going to be the demolition of 63rd and Cass Center as our new developer prepares to demo the buildings at the center and then rebuild our new center in the spring, which of course is going to include our theater, our new health club facilities, and several outlots. So, a lot of things going on in the EDC. Thank you to Larry and his staff. And then a big thank you to our first responders. Again, guys, we see so often on TV and everything where everyone else is running out and you guys are running in, so we really appreciate everything you do in keeping us safe here in Westmont. And lastly, thank you to all of our veterans, and please, everyone acknowledge our Veterans Day ceremony.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Trustee Parker.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things this evening. Waste Management and Westmont are offering their free leaf collection through the month of November, just to make everybody aware of that. And then I wanted to give a shout-out to our village arborist, John Yater. He's part of our staff here at the village, and he helps with the EIC committee. John seems to go above and beyond. He was out at the Westmont High School, Westmont Junior High. He brought to us a thing called Oaktoberfest, and they planted oak trees at both locations. And it's something that came across his desk, and he looked into it and thought it was a good idea, and the schools participated in that. And then he also, I don't know where this one came from, but he had a local Girl Scout troop, 51978, and they got a badge, a silver award. They built seven bat houses, and the bat houses will be distributed throughout the town to house bats, which help us with some of those pesky mosquitoes. Anyway, it's, you know, it's a great night for Westmont, the high school's participating, the Girl Scouts are participating, they have all kinds of great volunteer things going on, and it's a good night for us. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And again, Larry had it up on the screen, but this year it's unlimited bags of leaves, where last year it was two. So, rake them up and put it out, so on your normal garbage day for the month of November.
As long as it's in a bag, and there's no other landscape waste in it, right?
Yeah. No, it's leaves only. Trustee Guzal.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things. As everyone is well aware, we turned our clocks back on Sunday. Please do not forget to change those smoke detector batteries. Let's get that taken care of. Secondly, the fire department, November is winter weather preparedness month. The fire department has shared some information with the Communications Department, and I'm sure that we will be seeing things posted online, westmont.illinois.gov. In keeping with the fire department, Friends for Downers Grove Township Seniors will be hosting a fundraiser at the Country House, 241 55th Street in Clarendon Hills. There are coupons available at the South Fire Station at 6015 South Cass. 15 percent of your food purchase will be donated to the Downers Grove Township Seniors. The coupons which you do need are, the fire department does have those, so please stop in there and pick up your coupon, it's a great fundraiser. And the Friends of Downers Grove is also doing a special presentation, November 13th at 1:00. Admission is $5. It is The Fighting Sullivans. It's at the Tivoli Theater. This is the movie that inspired Saving Private Ryan. After the movie, there is going to be a discussion to follow with Hal Burke. He is president of the Victory and Valor Memories LLC. Tickets will be available at the Tivoli, so please, let's support our seniors in the area. And Mayor, that's all I have, thank you.
Well, thank you. Trustee Nero.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. First, on a sad note, I just wanted to express condolences to the Conklin family. Steve Conklin is a former Westmont resident, he's a Westmontite. His father passed away, Don Conklin, who was a personal friend of mine, my family, our accountant since I first started filing taxes, believe it or not. Very smart man, and he will be sorely missed. And also, I wanted, of course, to thank all the voters who came out on Tuesday, although I did come up a little bit short, it was nice to see how good we did in Westmont, and I appreciate that, you know, and it was my first real partisan race, and I thought a lot of our residents saw right through that and looked at what we do here in Westmont and our board, and it meant a lot. Grateful for all the support of everybody here on this board, and sorry you don't get rid of me this quick, but look forward to keep working with everybody. Aside from that, our next Public Works Committee meeting is December 20th, and just to reiterate, two important ceremonies, November 11th at Ty Warner Park is our Veterans Day ceremony. Please make sure you can come. And then, I don't know if Larry wants to pop this back up, I don't think so because he's not here, but the Robinson Memorial Dedication, November 10th at 10:00 a.m. as well.
Right here in Village Hall.
That's correct, and that's all I have, sir, thank you.
Well, thank you. Moving on, items to be removed from the consent agenda, anybody? If not, I'm going to ask Manager May to please read.
We do have a short consent agenda this evening. First, we have Village Board minutes. Board to consider the minutes from the Village Board meeting held October 25th, 2018. We have finance ordinance number 14 and the amount of $3,64,283.99. There are two proclamations, one that was mentioned, the first proclamation being honoring the Peace Armistice Day. Board to approve a proclamation commemorating the World War I Peace Armistice Centennial, the 100th anniversary. Second proclamation is pancreatic cancer awareness. Board to consider a proclamation for Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Day on November 15, 2018 in honor of Westmont Park Board Commissioner Diane Main. That is the entire consent agenda.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion by Addington to approve.
Second, Little.
Motion's made in second. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please. Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Parker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzal.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business A, proposed aggregate property tax levy. Board to consider a motion determining the proposed aggregate tax levy. I have a hard time. Finance Director Parker.
This was already discussed in a little bit more detail at the committee meeting. We just had, for the benefit of the public, I will just mention, this is the first step in the process. The next step will be on the December 6th meeting, and assuming that this passes as is, because it is less than a 5 percent increase, we are not required to have a public hearing nor to publish information in the paper, though the board is historically chosen to have, do both of those, so that's my expectation for what we'll be doing this year. Julia Cohen from the libraries here, in case there are any questions about the library's appropriations.
And again, we appropriate for the library.
Yes. We appropriate for the library.
Your board prepares your levy part of it.
Their board prepares the levy, and case law says we have to levy what they tell us to levy, but we legally have to levy it, so.
Do I have the motion?
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Parker.
Motion made in second to approve as presented. Any other comments from the public? Board, seeing none, roll call. Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Parker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzal.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business B, extension of temporary liquor license to Hilton Oakbrook Hills Resort. The board to consider ordinance approving a 60-day extension to a temporary liquor license issued in August 2018 for Hilton Oakbrook Hills Resort and Conference Center. As everybody's aware, they were purchased, and they're still got a lot of carpet officers that they need to get checked, and we're just wanting the board to approve an extension of the temporary liquor license. I don't know if the attorney has.
Obvious.
So.
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Little.
Motion's been made in second. And on to question. Seeing none, roll call. Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzal.
Yes.
Trustee Parker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business C, declaration of village property as surplus municipal services. I've got Public Works Director Ramsey.
Thank you, Mayor. We have five vehicles that will be disposed of by auction through Omenoff Auction Services on behalf of the Page Mayors and Managers Conference. These properties, upon being declared surplus and sold, will be removed from the village property inventory. Staff recommends approval of this declaration as listed vehicles of surplus by method of disposal. To give you an idea which vehicles they are, there are three old Crown Vics that were reused vehicles by the fire department, and then we have one white 2007 GMC and one old Public Works pickup truck that's been replaced.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion made in second. Who's the second? Okay. Speak up. Comments, questions? This is a normal procedure that we're required to do. Seeing none, roll call, please. Trustee Guzal.
Yes.
Trustee Parker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Parker.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzal.
Yes.
Trustee Parker.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business E, our 97th anniversary celebration. Board to honor incorporation date of the village of Westmont on November the 10th, 1921. We're working towards our 100th anniversary, and tonight we were able to have our third mural, depicting the 60s and 50s, 60s and 70s. As you can see, it's posted next to Trustee Nero. And we'll have more items that'll be shared with the public as we move closer to the anniversary celebration. Moving on to miscellaneous, did we miss anything? Anybody got anything?
I have one thing. I want to give a big shout-out to Alicia because she has hustled out those business licenses and those liquor licenses, and in between trying to do all the FOIA's, she gets handled and everything else. She has been amazing, and a lot of that is coming back in, and I'm just very, very proud of her, and I want her to know that. She does an outstanding job down there, and works well with anybody coming in for liquor licenses or anything.
I agree.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Mayor.
If nobody has, Trustee Barry.
I almost closed the meeting. So, voting at the library the other day was great, there was a huge line, big turnout, and got to see a lot of people that hadn't seen in a while, got caught up on residents that have moved out of the area. But I also noticed how many people that didn't mingle, and how many people I didn't know. And I'd just like to encourage everyone out there to, you know, get to know your neighbors, get to know people on the street, because it really makes it a better community, it makes it a better place to live for all of us. So, I just think we should all make a conscious effort as leaders of the community to try to do that, and then lastly, I was wondering if we wanted to introduce our new employee. I know that happened earlier, but I didn't meet him, but if the public would like to see our.
I think it's a great idea.
Does we have time this evening?
Oh, yeah, we have time. He was just informed he'd work in Thanksgiving.
This is Bruce Sylvester. Bruce Sylvester, our Community Development Director. We did have a little informal introduction at the committee meeting before the board meeting, but Trustee Barry just arrived before this meeting, and it might be worth, and, you know, again, you know, if you would kind of identify yourself and where we got you from.
Sure. So, my name's Bruce Sylvester, and I'm the recently hired Director of Community Development. I'm very excited to be here. Prior to working here with you in Westmont, I was the Senior Planner at the Village of Niles, so on the north side of Chicago, and I was there for six years. And prior to that, my family, I have a wife and we have three kids, we had lived in a small town in Wisconsin, if you're familiar with Monroe, Wisconsin. It's about halfway between Madison and Dubuque, it's a nice, small town. And I commuted up to the Madison suburbs and was the Director of Planning and Development for Verona, which is a very fast-growing suburb of Madison. And I was in that position about nine years, and prior to that, we move a lot, my wife and I were in Minnesota, which is actually where our kids were born, and I did various jobs as city planning and city zoning administration, administration jobs in the Twin Cities area. So, I'm very happy to be here, and I'm looking forward to working with all of you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Sure. You might as well go, not that we're stalling.
So, Renee Brainard, if you'd come up a minute, we have the, in our Human Resources, our Human Resources Director, Kathy Crane, actually, earlier this day, we had a, you know, retirement luncheon party for Kathy, and today was her last day in the office. Renee is our Assistant Human Resources Director, and she's been with us several weeks now, but if you would share your background too, please.
Sure, absolutely. So, my name is Renee Brainard. I will, on Monday, November 12th, officially be a village employee. So, I'll be employed as the Assistant Human Resource Director, as Steve mentioned. Prior to coming to the village, I worked for five and a half years with the Park District of Highland Park, so a northern suburb of Chicago. I started there as HR Generalist, and then for the last four years I was there, I was the Human Resource Manager. And then prior to that, I spent about 15 years in human resources in the private sector. So, very happy to officially be part of the village team, and I'm looking forward to working with all of you and getting to know you.
Welcome.
Thank you. You've got a great background, so.
Yeah. That's the Park District. Seeing, that's all, if we introduce everybody?
Yeah. Anybody else you want to?
No. I do need an executive session.
What?
And it's to discuss the collective negotiating matters between the village and its employees pursuant to Section 2, C2 of the Open Meetings Act. Do I have a motion?
Motion to go into executive session for the purpose stated.
Second, Barry. Second, roll call, please. Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Parker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzal.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
We will be adjourning to executive session. When we come out of the executive session, there's no further business, and I'll adjourn the meeting. I thank everybody for coming.
Prior to coming to the village, I worked for five and a half years with the Park District of Highland Park, so a northern suburb of Chicago. I started there as HR Generalist, and then, for the last four years I was there, I was the Human Resource Manager. And then, prior to that, I spent about 15 years in human resources in the private sector. So, very happy to officially be part of the village team, and I'm looking forward to working with all of you and getting to know you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You've got a great background, so.
Yeah.
I have the Park District. Seeing, that's all, if we introduce everybody?
Yeah. Anybody else you want to...
No. I do need an executive session.
What?
And it's to discuss the collective negotiating matters between the village and its employees pursuant to Section 2, C2, of the Open Meetings Act. Do I have a motion?
Motion to go into executive session for purpose stated.
Second, Barry. Motion made in second, roll call, please. Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Parker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzal.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
We will be adjourning to executive session. When we come out of the executive session, there's no further business, and I'll adjourn the meeting. I thank everybody for coming.